Hydraulics on the cylinder, if you push it down and then get up.
I'm probably alright.
We booked them again.
Oh, same weekend.
It was awesome.
Good to see you. I started watching your podcast when I got back.
Yeah, that was a few weeks ago. I'm. Wanted to get you before.
And uh.
Yeah, it turned out.
And. Yeah, wait, I have some.
I don't know about it.
Yeah. Get it anymore, huh? I just try to think I've scored it. Even even taking.
And it's more feeling good.
That's you.
You take sure of it.
Yeah, something's. Oh, well, yeah, she thought she was kind of.
I'm.
Okay. I haven't heard if she was coming in.
Maybe he did. And faster board, so that's all I'm. And she got certified, so.
Yeah.
That's one six thirty.
Kind of my deal. Under sound declaration doesn't affect the grade. I don't know. I don't know if that works with digesting issues or not. She said she was.
Oh. Oh, and Ben, they're all.
Started in July and I'm like.
Wow.
Who inspired it?
No, nobody.
In time, right, thirty?
I can look. Yeah.
Yeah, started five thirty.
Yeah. On my list for.
We agree. Then we went to six, then went, of course, the last several years were five thirty.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay. Call the meeting to order and end with a. Announcement of the Acton City Council meeting for. This day, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. And this time would ask you to sign, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I do the just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with a roll call of the city council members present. And that would be Jim Kane.
Present.
Samantha Peterson.
Present.
David Fisher.
Present.
EJ Bell.
Present.
And Trevor Dursky is online.
Present.
Thank you, Trevor. Okay, moving on to item number three, this would be the approval of the agenda of the city council. I would say that we have. Item in the consent agenda that will be asking to remove. Resolution two zero two five zero five zero eight. We're just not ready for that one yet and. Let me do do some more work on that and. We can take care of that consent agenda time. They have a motion to approve the agenda.
I can approve the agenda.
Motion by Kane.
Second, second.
Second by Peterson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote is Jim Kane.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
David Fisher.
Right.
EJ Bell.
Hi.
Trevor Dursky.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you, everyone. This time we'll move on to the citizens' opportunity to address the council. On any items not on the agenda. And in accordance with the rules and procedures, the viable open meetings law, no action or deliberation can occur on items presented during the citizens forum. I would ask you to walk to the lectern and state your name and address. And. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments, no more than three minutes. Does anyone like to address the council? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to item number five. The twenty twenty five sanitary sewer line pipe bursting con- project, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, just run through the items there in your packet with you. Recall at the meeting on April twenty second, the council awarded this construction contract to Dave Schmidt Construction in Cedar Rapids in the amount of one hundred four thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars. If you recall, there were two bidders on the project and Schmidt had submitted the lowest responsive responsible bid, so that was awarded to to that company. If you recall, the engineers estimated the probable cost of construction, however, was ninety-two thousand, so as we discussed at the last meeting, there's a few items in there that we're going to try to value engineer and get this project down in total cost a little bit closer to what that budgeted amount and esti- and estimated amount was for construction. Still on schedule for starting construction sometime in June. We don't have a pre-construction conference date set yet, but we anticipate that we'll get that done here next couple of weeks. Completion date is August first, so in the packet you've got a copy of resolution twenty twenty five oh five oh one. Be a resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the twenty twenty five sanitary sewer main pipe bursting project, again with Dave Schmidt Construction Cedar Rapids. So the bonds for the project are the performance bond, maintenance bond, and payment bond. The maintenance bond, if you recall from the specification review that we did probably a month or so ago, has a two-year maintenance bond on the construction work itself. So after the resolution is copy of the contract, it's been executed by the contractor, so if it's approved tonight, we'll sign that and send it back. And then a copy of the performance payment and maintenance bond, that has all been reviewed by myself and the project consulting engineer and the documents are in compliance with the specifications that we had for the project. We do also have, came in a little bit late, but so to make back it, we got a copy of the required certificate of insurance that meets all the necessary limits and names the city as an additional insured for the project, so. That's all I have on that. Unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, hearing none, we would move on to. Consideration of the approval. Do we have a motion to approve resolution two zero two five zero five zero one approving the contract and bonds?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kane.
Second.
Second by Bell. For the discussion. Okay, hearing none, the roll call vote is. Jim Kane.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
David Fisher.
Hi.
EJ Bell.
Hi.
Trevor Dursky.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item number six, then. The twenty nineteen CDPG TR Acton, the new production for sale housing current program with a contract. And. Once again, Scott.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, so quite a few items on this one, council, the city's grant administrator, of course, says EasyCog in this situation was advised by the State Department of Economic Development that there are some additional grant funds available from the IEDA for this particular program and the budget. So EasyCog has requested that the city submit a letter to IEDA requesting a contract amendment to increase the overall project budget by five thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars. Is anticipated that the review time on this would take quite a bit longer than what we had actually ended up realizing from IEDA, so we had submitted the letter based on the the council later confirming approval of that request. Thinking it would take since we had three weeks in between the last council meeting, this council meeting, and the projects coming to close, we wanted to get that in IEDA's hands so they could start their their process that usually takes quite a bit of time, but we're surprised that they they had it approved before this next council meeting, so it was a pleasant surprise, I guess. So tonight we was should still approve the confirmation of that request letter for contract amendment number five, increasing the overall project budget, as I mentioned, by that five thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars, and then we'd also request approval of contract amendment number two with EasyCog that increases their overall project budget for for this for this particular project by that same amount. And also extends the completion date for the project to May thirty first, and that was a document also that had been previously submitted to IEDA as amendment number four as a request, and that was extending the completion date to May thirty first. So we'd have an amendment to the EasyCog contract that extends the completion date May thirty first, as well as a a contract amendment, well, IEDA that extends that completion date, I think it was from April thirty first to May thirty first. Is is part of that as well, so and then contract amendment number five is for the the actual additional funds that were associated, I think there were a couple additional properties that were developed under this that created some additional administrative work for EasyCog, so that was the reason for the request, so. Also in the packet is a pay request number sixteen for the contractor on this project, it's in the amount of seventy-four thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents, and that is to Ralston Eco Homes. So we're getting down to probably got about one more pay request, I would suspect maybe two, but getting down to the end of this project, and we hope to have it all closed out here by by May thirty first. Again, the resolution in your packet twenty twenty five oh five oh two, that's the resolution that authorizes the amendment number two that I was talking about with EasyCog for the additional grant funding, just in the way of some review, originally that contract amount between EasyCog and the city was in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Then sometime thereafter, you all amended that to an additional twenty-four thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars, and so now we would propose to add some additional funding to it that would increase the overall work between the city and EasyCog to fifty thousand two hundred forty-three dollars and also extend that agreement through May thirty first. And so these are all funds that come from IEDA and not the city, so the grant budget is increasing per this request from one million thirty-nine thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars to one million forty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. And again, the do the increased costs were associated with the expansion of the scope of work for this project and delivering an additional two homes as part of this project, so. The last resolution there in your packet that pertains to this item is twenty twenty five oh five oh three, and again, that's just approving contract amendments four and five with the IEDA, and as I mentioned, that's providing for the change in completion date. Contract documents will reflect that completion date is now May thirty first of twenty twenty five, and then it also modifies that that total amount of the award to one million forty-five thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars, so. That's about all I've got on that.
Any questions for Scott? Okay. Hearing none. For the first item, would anyone entertain a motion to authorize and confirm approval of the letter to IEDA?
Motion to approve.
By Kane. Have a second. I can buy Peterson. And further discussion. Okay, hearing none, roll call vote then is Jim Kane.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
David Fisher.
Right.
EJ Bell.
Hi.
Trevor Dursky.
Hi.
Thank you, Trevor. Motion carries. And moving on to the the same subject, the resolution two zero two five zero five zero two approving and authorizing execution of amendment number two to the contract. Have a motion to approve that resolution zero two. Motion by Kane. Have a second.
I'll second.
By Peterson. And for the discussion on the motion, zero two. Okay, hearing none, the roll call vote is Jim Kane.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson. David Fisher.
Right.
And EJ Bell.
Hi.
And Trevor Dursky.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you, Trevor. And moving on to motion to authorize and confirm approval of the GAC's form and claim cert for seventy-four thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents to Ralston Eco Homes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kane.
I'll second.
Second by Peterson. Further discussion. Okay, here, moving on to the roll call, it's Jim Kane.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
David Fisher.
Right.
EJ Bell.
Hi.
And Trevor Dursky.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you. And moving on to. Motion to approve resolution two zero two five zero five zero three, this is approving the contract amendment number four and five with IEDA. To bring the total. Award to one million forty-five thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars with an end date of May thirty-one twenty twenty five.
Okay, do approve.
Motion by Kane.
Second.
Second by Peterson. And for the discussion. Okay, I would say that. That one million forty-five thousand dollars is a good amount of of value that this program has brought to the city. And. Both AC cog and the developer have been good folks to work with on this and kept this project moving along, I believe it's one of the the. Most complete projects like this across the state of Iowa, not sure of that, but I know we've got about halfway through, we're recognized by EDA as. As having moved that project along in good fashion, so. It's been about a couple of years coming and appreciated everybody working on that. Okay. So moving on then to the roll call. Is Jim Kane.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
David Fisher.
Hi.
EJ Bell.
Hi.
And Trevor Dursky.
Hi.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number seven, then, this is the fire station building project, and have a project update and pay up, review the pay application number four, and Scott will let you kick that off.
I'll go ahead and review the pay application, as you can see on the project update, obviously, the the steel arrived and is going up, so we're excited to see that, and things have been going well, still doing a lot of site work and dirt work and utility stuff, starting on some gas work, and I think here pretty quickly they'll start on the West Drive over here a little bit as well, and so just things continuing on as according to the schedule, so. Pay application number four council is in your packet, so I'll cover that, then Al is going to cover, Al Buck, the project architect's going to cover the two change orders that are in your packet. But in terms of application for pay request number four, just again, a reminder of the original contract sum, three million three hundred seventy-six thousand dollars with garling construction of Bell Plain, total completed and stored to date is six hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars, of course, we have a five percent retainage on the project, so that equals thirty-two thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars, so the total earned less the retainage to to garling thus far is six hundred fourteen thousand six, three hundred sixty-five dollars, so six fourteen, three sixty-five. Leaves a current pay at estimate due tonight of two hundred seven thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars. The next sheets on your package, just got to take a quick run through those like we always do, in terms of the work that's been completed this month, that's reflected in pay application number four. Generally, just have some general requirement items there related mostly to the project manager and superintendent administration costs. A big one, obviously, is the excavation work, you'll see that when there's about forty percent complete on this particular pay application, so that was seventy-nine thousand two hundred hours. Structural concrete also twenty-five percent of the work completed, fifty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, structural steel, as I mentioned, material, seventy percent complete there, eighteen thousand two hundred dollars, and we have some doors in there as well. Some plumbing fixtures and material, and then just electrical materials as well, so again, that brings the total amount to two hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars, then when you factor in the retainage, again, leaves that current pay application due of two hundred seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Terms of the overall project, you know, where are we at as a percentage, we're at nineteen percent complete, so the balance to finish leaves a total amount for the contractor of two million seven hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred dollars, so. That's all I have on pay application number four.
Anybody has any questions on that? But this time I'd like to introduce Al Buck. Architect for the project and. Like to review the change orders three and four, Al, thank you.
Change order three, the first one, that's a credit. Back to you guys. Regarding the overhead diverse of change from. One hundred thousand cycle springs and overhead doors to fifty thousand cycle springs, so it's actually a credit brought up by the overhead door contractor themselves, it's something that would simplify the speed installation and also make alleviating any kind of clearance issues. Basically, a hundred thousand spring coils, and it's actually two fifty thousand cycle springs stacked up to five, eliminating one of those and just going with the fifty thousand cycle, but I think a great, great suggestion there apart, and savings I would. Encourage council to think. And then the second one.
Did you mention how that was a deduct to seventy-four hundred?
Right, that would be down for seventy-four hundred dollars. The second one, I've actually got labeled from barely a change order request two R. To just for clarification, I think it's in the in the agenda as number four, but just this is actually technically two R, and that is a. An add for ten thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and eighteen cents. And that is. Regarding the foundation drain and tying that to the storm, the new storm drain going into the along the south lines of the property, so this is something that the contractor brought up. The typical course of construction, we have a foundation drain tile that goes around the primitives building, and usually the elevation is such that that can daylight out somewhere, but. Due to revision of the design, keeping this parking lot, the elevation of the building itself had had to go down, which moved that part of this northwest corner is a little bit below grade. So we included things like a really robust waterproofing system and that drain tile to make sure we're keeping water out of the building and making sure we don't have any moisture issues. But the building is so low that that. It doesn't allow that foundation drain tile to go off the grade anywhere, so what we can do is connect to the storm drain, which will actually be a better, not positive for the for the project, but it does result in this in this cost increase. It does. Got to make you feel better, this is about ten thousand dollars, the one I just talked about is a credit for seventy-four hundred dollars, we actually have a fourth of that credit, that's thirty-five hundred dollars, which would actually offset. That's the change order request to revise. You guys have any questions for us? And I would say, certainly by taking it, we have seen the dump them excavation, some moist spots in the soil that have to do a little bit of over excavate, over excavation and bringing bringing in good fill. It's been kind of moisture a few times, so again, with the building that northwest corner is slightly below grade, it was not a basement, but it's a little bit below. You know, below the soil, and so I just really, you know, strongly advise for the life of the building that you take every measure possible to mitigate that moisture, and that's that's what this will help to.
We had four years in development, Al. And we didn't see that.
We couldn't because we moved the building, dummy.
You know what, Jim, you say that again, I am going to walk over there and I will drag you out by your ears, and I will make sure that you never come in this fucking building again.
Good.
The.
Al.
Does question. Maintain the. Maintain the parking lot, we had to get the building lower to make the drive for the fire trucks out the front door to be a reasonable slope, so it did push the building down, that was done in the latter.
But why wouldn't you put a drain tile to? The sewer tile, to the sewer.
Because typically you can just drain it to degrade, and that's usually cheaper easier to do. Any other for the questions?
How are we on on the schedule, Al? How's it looking?
Yeah, tracking, tracking really well. I think they've done a great job of kind of working through a few wet days early on, but. Really, really happy to see the steel, steel going up, so I think overall, I think they're right, right tracking with the schedule that they planned out for us. We continue to meet on site every other week, so we're observing the construction, we're meeting with the contractors. Getting updates and. Making sure everything runs smoothly. So far, so good, and then really the good news is getting out of the ground now, usually if there's any kind of issue during construction, they usually show up, but the underground work and we really did pass that stage, so that's that's always a good sign.
For the questions? Okay, thank you, Al. And continue on with that topic. Would there be a motion to approve a application number four? Motion by Kane. Have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Peterson. And for the discussion on the motion. Hearing none, the roll call vote, Jim Kane.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson. David Fisher.
Right.
EJ Bell.
Hi.
And Trevor Dursky. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. And then considering also a motion to approve change order number three. That's for the springs. With the credit, we have a motion to approve change order number three.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kane.
I'll second.
Second by Peterson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote, Jim Kane. Samantha Peterson. David Fisher. EJ Bell. And Trevor Dersky. Motion carries, thank you. And then moving on to consider change order number four. A motion to approve change order number four, this is now changed to two R. Motion by Kane. Have a second. Second by Peterson. Any further discussion on change order two R? Moving on to roll call vote, Jim Kane. David Fisher. EJ Bell. Trevor Dersky.
Apologies, I thought I had a meat on.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. Okay, thank you, Al. Appreciate that. And next is item number eight, the city council meeting time change proposal. And Scott, review that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Council, I have resolution twenty twenty-five, zero five, zero four in your packet. At the last council meeting, the council expressed interest in concerning the necessary instruments to change the regular meeting of the Atkins City Council meetings. Would stay the same on the second, fourth Tuesdays, but change the meeting time from six-thirty to six P M. So our code of ordinance prescribes that that's done by resolution, so we've gone ahead and prepared that. Resolution for your consideration, if the resolution is passed and approved. Then the first meeting it would be effective at would be your next regular meeting, which would be May twenty-seventh. And so again, the resolution or package just simply changes that meeting time from. Six-thirty P M to six P M on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. Have anything further on that?
All right, any? Want to care to make a motion to approve resolution zero five, zero four? Motion by Fisher. Second by Bell. Any further discussion? Right, hearing none, the roll call vote is Jim Kane. Samantha Peterson, David Fisher. EJ Bell. And Trevor Dersky. Motion carries. Moving on to item nine. Lot thirteen, Ridgeview Seventh Edition, six nineteen High Point Drive and Lot B, Stone Ridge First Edition, Cardinal Avenue. Five hundred Cardinal Avenue. Scott, review.
Thank you, Mayor. You have council up in your packet, resolution twenty twenty-five, zero five, zero five. And that is a resolution to request an abatement accrued property taxes and exemption from future taxation. On property owned by the City of Atkins for public purpose, just in the packet, also have attached some. Some documents there, just indicating that now the property is now titled in the city. Both properties are titled in the city of Atkins name, as Mayor mentioned, the one on Cardinal and the one over on. High Point are in now in the city of Atkins name, and then also the notice that the developers. Provided that identifies the delinquent taxes on the properties of three thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's for both six nineteen High Point Drive and five hundred Cardinal Avenue. Again, just in way of a little further background, back in April of twenty twenty, the council had approved. The purchase of five nineteen High Point for forty-four thousand dollars. Independently, the five hundred Cardinal Avenue property was acquired through the subdivision development process and plating. Unfortunately, the deed for five nineteen High Point was not recorded and as such, never realized as tax exempt. Property since that time, so as a result, property taxes have accrued and are owed on that parcel. By the city, as I mentioned, the deed for both properties is now recorded and reflected in the records as owned by the city. So what this resolution does and it's it's an ask. You're basically approving this resolution and requesting an abatement of accrued property taxes. From the Benton County Treasurer in consideration by the Board of Supervisors. Probably not likely that they would forgive all of those taxes. Likely they'll forgive some, but I think what we've framed out here is kind of letting them make that determination, so we're we're asking them. For their consideration and forgiving back taxes and future taxes, but yeah, I just, I don't expect that they'll forgive. All that are owed on it, so we may bill, my best guess is we might still owe a couple thousand dollars.
Trevor, would you be able to mute your phone there just for a minute? Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, thank you, Scott. And moving on to. Request a motion to approve resolution zero two-five, zero five, zero five. Resolution to request abatement of accrued property taxes and exemption from future property taxation. Or public purpose.
Make a motion for this, but we got to have a hardcore discussion on how this got fucked up. Would be pretty blunt. Five years is beyond ridiculous.
A motion, and we have a second, any further discussion?
So I'd have to agree with Jay. This. If this is sitting out there for five years and not being managed by individuals within this city. Is a total embarrassment and for it to cost the taxpayers of this city because of. Total mismanagement. It's it's. It's terrible. I I just, that's the only way to describe it is it's it's. It it should have been managed from the beginning and never was, and to find out about it now, thanks you, Scott. Thanks for getting involved with it, getting it resolved, but we had two city administrators. That were in there and were involved with this entire project, could have got it through, we had the mayor that was setting. Apparently, he had to be involved too, and still nothing actually transpired. It is disgusting to me, it really truly is.
The dates, it was done April of twenty twenty, that was seven months before the derision. This council wasn't there, the mayor wasn't here, that's when we had Amber Bell as our city.
So Jim. Hey, Jim, do you want, I know all the details.
There's five years. We had a contractor coming to our, coming to us, tell us, hey, you got to pay your taxes. You need, you'd think that would throw up a red flag.
Just so you know, since you brought that up, our fearless leader was in charge of her and and tied her hands, so she couldn't do nothing. And you had a council that tied her hands named Nathan Shepherd, your butt buddy. So no, don't speak. You want to bring it up, tied it, tied her hands. And trust me, I know everything about what you continue to do, and it was a mistake, and it's going to back for you here pretty soon. And you too. You made a mistake and it's coming to bite you. And just so you understand that it's unacceptable, he is in charge of it. That's why this stuff is going to change. He needs, really, he should be, he should leave. He should be done. The amount of money this town has lost because of the incompetence, we're not talking thousands, we're talking multiple hundreds of thousands. If not into the millions. Mismanagement, we paid Sandy a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour, over a hundred thousand dollars. In what, a lesson a year? You were all for it. You for Kelly, you were all for it. Three years, this didn't get brought up, three years, they brought it to us. He did nothing, Kelly did nothing, Sandy, it was in his thing. Let me go grab it. Took him half hour to get it fixed. And you know why that property, did you know Van Horn came to Bruce and offered him free playground for that, those two things? He never took it free. Because he wasn't sure he wanted the land. It's up to me, after this moment, we should put those that land up on the market and get our money back. So stop talking like you know what you're talking about because you don't know jack shit. You're welcome, because you're.
Putting that out on video now, we now we have the facts.
Yeah, that is the facts, and there's still more to come about you.
We'll see what happens in the court case in September.
Oh, let's leave it.
You have no idea how much money you're going to get sued for, buddy. You're in a lot of trouble. Everybody in this town knows it. You don't think I know? Okay, you don't think we know that you're calling up there? You don't think they haven't called me and told me? You don't think the Benton County Sheriff's talked to all of us? They say you're disgusting. You're a child and inappropriate, so is him, inappropriate all the time. You know what I'm talking about. So Jim, you've been inappropriate for four years. And the problems that have been solved, I mean, you wanted Kelly back here. We had the opportunity to get rid of her. Because we knew what we were doing, you still don't know what you're doing. Your head is so far in the sand, just because you live here, Jim, doesn't mean you know nothing.
Okay, moving on to any other comments, I think I heard Trevor maybe. Trevor, any comments on resolution two zero two-five?
No, I'll save my comments for next meeting when I'm a person.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the roll call vote. Jim Kane. Samantha Peterson. David Fisher. EJ Bell. Trevor Dersky. Motion carries. Hey, moving on to item number ten, Koopman Holding First Edition and Preliminary Platte and Final Platte. And review the recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission and Scott.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, that guy in your packet there, council, you've got a resolution approving a preliminary and final plat. Running these together at the same time concurrently because there isn't any private or public infrastructure being developed as a part of the proposal. Property is owned by Koopman Holding First Edition, located eighty-four North View Avenue here in Atkins. As Mayor mentioned, we did run this before, planning and zoning commission last Thursday night, May eight. The owner and the consultant were here and reviewed that plat with the planning commission, it was unanimously. Approved to recommend to the council for your consideration and approval of the preliminary. And final plat on this one, property is zoned light industrial, but a two-point-two acre parcel. Applicant wishes divide the property into three lots, there are existing structures on the properties, but they do align with the. Allowable uses in the underlying permitted zoning district, which is essentially storage that they're going to be used for. There isn't any water and sewer services proposed as part of the development, but that's not ruling that out in the future. These buildings may tie into the city's mains out front there, so that is available one. And if they decide to tie into that, just point out that they, as far as the front yard setback is concerned, the buildings would be permitted as a. Non-conforming structure with regard to the front yard setback, so some point in the event, future, something would happen to them, they'd be destroyed and. Have to be rebuilt, they'd have to comply with what that front yard setback requirement is per the city's zoning ordinance. Against mostly just a replating of the lots for purposes of the owner disclosing of his interest in. One or more of parcels at some point, so. I don't think I have anything further, we did go through a number of issues related to access. Easements that were acquiring through the plating process to provide access to the adjacent properties around there, so. We've got those issues covered, we did have the proposal reviewed by our civil engineering consultant, Nick, and you've got a copy of his. His letter of recommendation there in the packet, and I just included copies of the zoning ordinance and then the aerial photographs of the site. And then of course, the preliminary and final plat, so I don't have anything further in terms of any more background on it, but I know Susan and Rob are here and they may. Want to make a few comments as well.
Open the floor.
I don't really have anything to add, but I can answer any question that you might have. The promise, the promise of selling lot one, which is the middle of building and we're going to retain the other two lots.
I don't have any questions, I know what you're doing.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve the preliminary and final plat. Resolution two zero two-five, zero five, zero six, motion by Bill or by Fisher. Have a second. Second by Kane. Any further discussion by council? Okay, hearing none. Roll call vote is Jim Kane. Samantha Peterson. David Fisher. EJ Bell. Trevor Dersky. Motion carries. Solution is approved. Moving on to city administrators report, Scott floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just the one item, and thank you to Rita for mentioning this, beating her so ago, appreciate it a lot and look forward to seeing you. So a lot of the beating greet, we're going to propose May twenty-eight, five to six P M here in the council chambers here at city hall. For myself, I invite to the community and members of various boards and commissions to to come in and hopefully be a good, good event.
Sorry, it took so long, should have been done sooner.
All right, punching cookies.
Yep, sure.
Hey, anything else, Scott?
No, no, that's all I got, I can cover some on the consent agenda too, real quick, but go ahead.
Anything on the R F, the RFP development, did you wanna comment on that at all, the audit?
Uh, yeah, that uh, I'll be working on that, so uh I. We've got our state auditors in here currently and we're finishing up that work with them. Uh, I think I've mentioned this probably in a meeting or two in the past, uh, you know, in my background, we always used a. Uh, a private CPA firm to do our audits in Clear Lake and uh really worked out, uh, I thought really well, I see a number of. My colleagues, uh, you'll ask any questions by going out for RFP, so so I do wish, I know there was some. Consideration of that with previous administrators issuing an RFP, I don't think it ever quite got to the development stage, but I do hope. Probably at the next meeting to have a draft of the RFP for your consideration for. Audit services and and we'll send that out to a number of firms, I I did contact the company that uh did our audit in Clear Lake, they do uh Iowa City. Uh, Betendorf, uh, Johnston, and Clive. Uh, Muscatine, and and a number of other school districts as well, uh. Might do Marion too, I'm sure they do the Marion School, but uh, so we're gonna send the RFP, develop it, get your approval on it, send out an RFP. Uh, I know they're interested in continuing their work in relationship, I worked with them for twenty four years nearly in Clear Lake, they're interested in continuing. That working relationship with you, I reached out to a colleague up in Center Point and and he's also interested in. Kind of doing an RFP about the same time, see if we get uh some more interest by kind of both communities issuing an RFP for audit services. Uh, around that time, uh, some of the the kind of conversation going around on my list serve is on on the cost and. You know, I'm hopeful, you can't guarantee anything, but I I think we could see a a less cost uh for the audit going going forward, what a private. Consulting firm doing, so looking looking forward to that, so yeah, thanks for bringing that up there.
In the mayor's report, attended the U C cog board meeting and landfill commission meetings. And attended a supervisors meeting, board of supervisors. So they're going through their budget um. Uh considerations. That's about it for mayor's report, would like to say that uh you've heard us talk about a beam signing or a um. Downbreaking type of ceremony and we're gonna uh do the logistics of all that, we're gonna move that off till. A ribbon cutting, open house type of thing, we'll get the complete building uh ready to go, so. We'll move on with that process. And the next item is the consent agenda. And there, like I mentioned, uh, ask for approval consent agenda. Uh, with removing resolution two zero two five zero five zero eight.
And Mike Mayor just give a couple's background comments on a couple of those, blessing, uh, so the approval of the class C retail alcohol license for the Legion Post two one seven located nine main avenue. Uh, that would be a new application, may recall, and we previously had approved an application for him, but it actually turned out to be not. The one that they wanted or needed, so they reapplied on it and since they'd already been issued one, I went ahead and timely approved it so that they could. Could operate, so so that's why that effective date is May first of twenty twenty five. Uh, also, we have in the packet the approval of the twenty eighty agreement for the law enforcement services with Benton County. Seems to be going pretty well, uh, you know, they did, as you know, from the budget, double their rate uh that they charges for uh law enforcement services, so. So our contract with them is uh for this this year would be sixty thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, and that's roughly eighteen hours. Uh, per week, about a little less than a thousand hours. A coverage per year with Benton County, but but again, it seems to be working quite well, I have not heard any real negative comments about it, so. So the sheriff's office has brought that forward to us and if you're okay with that, you know, as part of the consent agenda, we can sign that and I continue on with them. Uh, and then also, this is just a kind of a, I think I understand it. Here is just sort of a yearly maintenance street program uh with L L telling, they do the steel coat work uh for the city, so. Number of streets that uh were previously identified for seal coating, uh, definitely several, so this is not like our big. P C C paving project that we're gonna fix a lot of the cracked up streets and broken manhole boxhouse and those kind of things, this is simply a seal coat maintenance project, so. No bidding requirement, telling's done this work here, I think for years, uh, but it is in the amount of ninety one thousand eight hundred ten dollars and seventy five cents, so. Definitely several streets on there that uh desperately need some seal coating, so so there is a couple of spots there where some real. Bird baths informed as I call them, so so they'll come in, kind of level those out, uh, one there just off thirty third, uh, going in circle view is just terrible. Uh, so I look at that every time after raid, it's just like a huge lake there, so so that's one of them that's on there, they'll level that out, seal coat that and. You'll hopefully get rid of some of these bird baths uh around town on some of these streets and then. Of course, the real goal of the seal coating is exactly what it implies, just to seal the cracks and preserve the pavement uh from from cracking up, but. Uh, their plan would be to start that work uh here in June, probably about a week or so worth of work and wrap it up by the end of uh June thirtieth. And that's all I got for that.
We do have the approval of the Atkins. City Hall Community Room to the for the friends of library for the uh spring book sale, June twelfth, so. For that that weekend anyway. Would we have a a motion to approve the consent? Okay, and I would add, uh, if you consider adding the removal of item, the resolution two zero two five zero eight.
Yeah, with, well. I suppose we never made a fresh book value in the beginning, so uh yes, with that caveat of.
Right.
Five oh eight res- resolution being taken off.
Okay, thank you. Motion made Dersky, second by Kane. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call, Jim Kane.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
And David Fisher.
Hi.
PJ Bill. And Trevor Dersky.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number fourteen, other business.
Yeah, um. Scott, can we get um sense of where the employee handbook is in terms of development?
Uh, yeah, I'd probably give you that, I I have done nothing with that since since I got it a couple of weeks ago, just. I just haven't had the time.
Do we, I mean, I think that's relatively high priority, the council's indicated. Um, that and then also the video, which, I mean, have we decided to stay with Webex? For the time being, or are we pre-decision on on meeting broadcast and audio video as well?
No, we've actually got a meeting set tomorrow with another potential vendor on that one.
Okay. What's a, what's a reasonable? Time to throw out for for a target to get to get that resolved?
Yeah, we've been trying, we've had a few proposals and you'll then no follow up with those firms, so we're reaching out, this firm seems to be. Responsive, so hopefully we'll find out more tomorrow, I guess.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to hear um hear how that goes.
Yep.
It's it's for like probably five meetings in a row. We've we've really been asking for this to get. To get settled and to the extent we can help, we certainly will, but it was a need to get it done.
Yeah, and then uh to Scott's point there, we waited for proposals to return and follow, we've followed up with um. Different firms and sometime no response, so um. Yeah, we look forward to having a meeting tomorrow about that.
Yeah, please let us know, please let us know how that uh how that is actually made.
Alrighty.
And then, I know it's been discussed multiple times, but we need to. Get um a city clerk actually hired. You know? Nothing against you, Bruce, but we need to get staff in that office. That's gonna. Utilize it. We need to get some staff in there to help go on. So I think we should go ahead and let Scott get that posted, get that figured out, I know we got it in the budget, I know it's been talked about for multiple years. I think, the other thing is that we need to let Scott as city administrator be in control of pretty much. All this stuff, I think he's been here now, what, about three months now?
Two and a half, yeah.
Yeah, two and a half months, I think he has a good, talking to him, I'm sure everybody else has talked to him, has a good idea. On what's going on, I think he should be in full control of the meetings, obviously staff. Get somebody hired that's gonna, you know, be adequate for the position that he's looking to hire. You know, so I think that should be done like tomorrow, start busting that out, I don't, I don't know anybody else's thoughts on it, but.
But you said, thank you for that, uh, cuz yeah, I mean, there were definitely like the personnel manual, that's definitely a higher priority, but. Yeah, it's every day that there's something comes up that.
Yeah, we can't have you do- doing the mundane.
I'm doing the lot of.
That that's unacceptable, we need to stop that now, so.
Let's get that on the agenda for this meeting.
Yep, so.
And and I don't mind doing some of the mundane, but uh, yeah, definitely, there are definitely more pressing matters that I just.
But what what do you want to see happen, obviously, on the next agenda to get that ball?
Oh, well, I could draft a job uh uh announcement, position announcement, your approval and consideration, we could distribute it out.
Okay, get ready for the next, next.
For some part.
For the next meeting. Okay, and let you taste the heat on that, so. Does that work for you, Trevor?
Yeah. Yep, sounds good.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none. That we've complete completed our work for this evening and would ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Kane, do I have a second? Second by Fisher. Okay, roll call vote then is Jim Kane.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson. David Fisher. PJ Bill.
Hi.
Trevor Dersky.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you, everyone, have a good evening.